So this meeting of the Galt City Council duly open for the transaction of business. Liz, would you please conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Haynes?
Here.
Haynes?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
For Boye, who is present. Meredith?
Here. This time I'll turn the floor over to our city attorney to disclose any reportable actions out of closed session.
The meeting, Mr. Mayor, council members, council met in closed session this evening on two pieces of litigation, Consumis Community Services District versus City and Galt Redevelopment Agency and Citizens for Yes on Recall versus City of Galt. There's no reportable action on either of those actions. City Council also met in closed session, conference with labor negotiator averting Galt Police Officers Association, and there's also no reportable action.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to stand for a moment of silent prayer, followed by the flag salute presented by Cub Scout PAC 84 Den 1.
Color guard post colors. Please repeat with me the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color guard dismiss.
At this time, our city clerk will read our video statement.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and SherWest Cable Systems. The next meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Agenda approval additions and/or deletions?
None.
Counsel? None. Okay. Public comment?
Under Government Code, Section 54954.3, members of the audience should address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt City limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Shannon Bramwell?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Shannon Bramwell and I live within the city of Galt. I just have a few questions, so I will be very brief tonight. My questions are concerning the recall. I've heard several things about it. I'm not involved in it, so I just have a few questions. First of all, how much is this going to end up costing the city? Where is this money going to come from? I've heard that there are three attorneys handling this case. Why three? At last week's hearing, two of the attorneys were present, one having driven up from San Francisco. Is the city paying for the attorney to drive up here from San Francisco? There weren't local attorneys? Thank you.
Mrs. Bramwell, before you walk away, I just kind of curious, isn't your husband the president of the group that's behind the recall?
No, he is not.
He's not? Okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
Okay, Tony Roberts?
Hi, my name's Tony Roberts, and I've been here once before, and I wanted to thank everybody very much because of the help you gave us. We needed it, and it meant a lot to me. And I'm really confused though because we're at the final end of this situation that we've had that happened on August 9th, and it's like everybody's been taken care of and is walking away happy, and at this last little bit when we just want to get, close it up and get rid of it out of our lives, things are just starting to go crazy, and we're jumping through hoops for these people, and it's like we're getting denied everything. So I was hoping maybe you guys could help me out and find out maybe what's going on and why, because we're not getting any answers again. And that's, basically, I just need your help.
Did you get an opportunity to speak with representatives from staff after the last meeting?
No.
Okay. I think Paula, you had mentioned that you'd speak to her?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was... There's a lot going on. Actually, she has been working with Braggard Associates, and she met with Craig Wheaton, who's been working with her to resolve the issues. And the last that I had heard, you two were working through your differences.
It was for about a week, and now it's just all blown up again, and we're just getting denied everything. And we're going through hoops for them to just hang in there. We're doing everything they request.
Are you still living at the same location?
Yeah, we're paying out of our pocket for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, what I will do, because I did speak to Craig just within the last couple days, and I thought everything was going okay, so what we will do is I will meet with him or talk to him first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay, if you need more detail, I can give you more detail. I just think this wasn't the time or place to get into all that real deep.
Well, it is, it's very compli...
Yeah.
I mean, there are a lot of details too that's been going on for quite a while, so yeah, we would be better to meet, you know.
Yeah, I have no problem being honest and true about it and fair, you know.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
All right, I apologize for that because I thought that that was, you know, well underway, so I hadn't heard otherwise.
Well, I know, we've been all excited about it, everything going on the last two weeks.
Okay, all right.
Amanda Brunella?
Again, I speak for Tony and myself. I also lived on G Street and were a roommate, and we wanted to make sure that we thank the existing city council for your support in this ongoing situation, and we're really glad that you were available for us to come too, and we feel that we have been hurt. And good luck to everybody who needs to have luck tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have for now. Do you want to wait now? You want to wait for the C S D?
Mr. Ballmer? Any other public comment before we move on with the rest of the calendar? All right. Information consent calendar. Move.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pro 5-0 takes us to item G1 under Scheduled Matters, which is the proposed amendment to the Galt zoning ordinance related to the place of worship in the light manufacturing office professional and neighborhood commercial zones. This time I'll turn it over to our Community Development Director, Kurt Campion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item was heard by the Planning Commission on October 9th, at which time they recommended approval of the proposed amendment to the zoning code which would allow places of worship in the LM zoning district as well as the, I believe, neighborhood commercial, as well as the office professional. You have attached to your summary report, the complete report that was given to the Planning Commission, as indicated in the report, we had an inquiry about utilizing one of the vacant buildings in the industrial park for purposes of a place of worship, church. The zoning code did not and does not allow places of worship in those three zoning designations that I just mentioned previously, which included the industrial park or LM. Upon review with the city attorney's office and based on the, what they call the RILUPA Act, which is the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, which was approved by the federal government several years ago, actually passed in Congress in 2000, you have to provide, if there are other types of uses which are similar, you would have to allow places of worship. We looked at our zoning code, and you have places of assembly such as emergency shelters, health clubs, theaters, public recreation, public amusement enterprises, auditoriums that are allowed within the light manufacturing zone, either outright permitted or conditionally permitted. The alternative would be to disallow those types of uses and also disallow places of worship. We felt it was most appropriate to allow places of worship with a conditional use permit and amend the code. So that is basically what you have before you tonight, is a code amendment to allow places of worship in those three zoning districts with a conditional use permit that would be reviewed by the Planning Commission. That pretty much concludes my report unless you have any questions.
Any questions from council before we move to open the public hearing?
I don't have any.
I have no questions.
Right. And at this time, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this topic tonight? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Comments by council?
I have no comments.
I have a problem with it.
The statute that Kurt mentioned was one of the first ones I took a class on at the League of Cities because I think it was Orange County at the time, wasn't it? It was a big dispute.
There was, there's been several lawsuits.
But I totally support what they want to do, and I'm familiar, at least, one of our organizations in town that's been making use of some office space, I know, out there and some gathering space, and I've worked in industrial parks my entire life, and I think the influence would do us well, so.
Right. Councilman Boye?
No, let's move forward.
I agree. I think the law's pretty clear here, so we're really just tying up some loose ends on our... So I will support this. Do we have a motion?
I'll move. I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pro 5-0. Okay, that takes us to item G2. Actually, we have a presentation first, I'm sorry. I'm going to turn the floor over to our city clerk, Liz Aguirre, who is going to talk about a special presentation.
I would like to ask Darrell Clare to join me down at the podium. Okay, I'll just read a little bit of this, I don't want to take up a lot of time, but what I am holding is a California Legislature Assembly Resolution that was done by the Honorable Guy Houston. And let me read a few of them. Whereas Darrell Clare, a native California resident, has brought credit and distinction to himself through his career and civic achievements and through his many activities, he has improved the quality of life within the local community and throughout the state, and it is appropriate at this time to highlight his many accomplishments and extend to him special honors and the highest commendations. And it goes through his, where he was born, about his place of business, the fact that he's been involved in the community, was first elected to the Galt City Council in March 2002, serving two consecutive terms as mayor, and is currently serving as city council member. It goes through all of his appointments, local and state, local, countywide and statewide appointments. Whereas a leader in every sense of the word, a forward thinker, who envisions life as it should be in the future and attires the worker for better understanding among people, Darrell Clare has won the praise and admiration of the entire community. Resolved by Assembly Member Guy Houston that Darrell Clare be commended on his long and distinguished career of leadership in the local community, applauded on his exemplary display of public achievements, and extended sincere best wishes for continued success in the future. So on behalf of Guy Houston, I would like to present...
It meant a lot, I guess, probably especially to get this from Guy because he's done so much for our community. Any of you who've had a chance to work with him, he's just done a lot of good things. It's a state capital for us, given us a lot of time and consideration. He's completing his term of office here at the end of this cycle, and will be moving on and doing other things. But it was very kind of him to do this for me, and I appreciate it. But it takes five of us, whichever five it is, and the different times I've served up there with the rest of you, and it takes the community's support to get the things done we're getting done. I do appreciate, and I think most of you know, probably one of my biggest passions has been able to try and represent us in the region on CICOG and other elected boards and things, and it has been very helpful to have also Alan Nakamichi and other representatives, Milo, there's quite a few of them that have been friends of Galt, getting some things done in the region. So thank you, Guy, for this. It's neat to have some recognition, but it goes to all of us here at the city and the staff as well. And I'm just glad that Galt's being recognized again at the state level, is taking our fair share on the projects going on and getting the funding that we deserve. So thank you again to him for helping us in those efforts. In fact, the waste treatment plant was one of the best. I think we've told this story before, but we were in a lawsuit with the state of California for hundreds of thousands of dollars, and they had 15 people, I think, in the room that day, and there was a couple of us from staff, and Guy Houston showed up in person and introduced himself and just sat down.
Corrections.
Department of Corrections, and the whole meeting changed at that point, and we were awarded those hundreds of thousands of dollars, and they settled the case without going any further. So just one time where, as I say, he went out of his way to be there to back up our community, so thank you to him.
All right, that takes us to item G2, which is the 2009 Transit 5307 Program of Projects. At this time, I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director, Greg Halliday.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, next item before is a recommendation that the council conducts a public hearing, gets public feedback, and afterwards approves the federal fiscal year 2009 program of projects for Federal Transit Administration Section 5307 funds. In addition to state transit funds, we receive federal transportation funding for urban areas through Section 5307, the Transportation Equity Act, or T. Section 5307 grants are used to finance transit services such as planning, capital acquisition, construction, improvements, and operations and maintenance. City of Galt was combined with Lodi as part of an overall Galt-Lodi urbanized area. This made us eligible for a bigger share of federal funding through Section 5307. Each year, we're entitled to request these federal funds through this arrangement with the City of Lodi. The share of funds given to Lodi and Galt is based upon a population and population density formula from F D A. We then portion those funds between Galt and Lodi through a target split that we've negotiated with the City of Lodi, which the council has approved. This is only a target fund. The actual split is based upon an annual approved program of projects. This target split mirrors the split that we get from the federal government, and our program of project varies from year to year as needs ebb and flow between Lodi and Galt. We have the ability to take more money one year and pay it back the next year. As in years before, our federal program of projects is the full amount for operations and maintenance of the S C T Link operations. For the federal fiscal year 2009, our proportionment is $328,000. We also have a fiscal year '07 carry forward of $38,811, which brings a total amount of For the approved budget, our share of transit operations for this coming year is estimated to be at $1.15 million. This is about a third of the cost for our transit system. Costs above the F D A funds come from Transportation Development Act, or T D A, funds. Staff is requesting that council conduct a public hearing and approve the federal fiscal year 2009 program of projects.
This time we'll open the public hearing. Any comments from the community? This time we'll close the public hearing. Comments by council?
I have one question.
Go ahead.
I think this is probably where it is. The form on the budget change, is it indicating the negative balance and the unreserved fund balance? If that's what it's saying, would you like to give me a little explanation about that?
Yes, it is turning to reflect a negative fund balance. That's because of a decrease in T D A funds that, over what we estimated the budget time to what we recently approved. I think it was in April, the council approved the T D A claim, and it was about $137,000 under what was estimated in the budget. So we were going back and looking at the C I P and looking to cut some projects that were funded by that, or perhaps look at cutting the transit costs.
In August, we actually made an adjustment to the revenue side of the claim that was submitted, so at that time, we should have actually made an adjustment to the appropriations as well. So as Greg mentioned, we will be looking at reducing expenditure line item so that the fund is in fact balanced.
Okay, so this isn't really showing that we're spending money we don't have. We just thought we were going to have the money and we're not going to get it.
That's correct.
It does unless we change something, and we do anticipate coming back once we've had an opportunity to negotiate the new split of the contract with the county. We anticipate that will change relative to the drop in fixed route service, and we'll have a savings at that point. We also have savings in other projects. We also need to look at S D A funding, which was down for the year. So I think all is in consideration, completely, the post-plan to balance the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments by council?
Just related, on the transportation issues, November 6th this week at 5:30 here in the council chambers, on behalf of CICOG, I'll be hosting an unmet needs hearing and meeting, so, Tim, I know you've had a couple...
I submitted it.
Okay, good. You can either submit it through writing, or you can come to the meeting, and if you have unmet needs, this is related to, but not directly.
Transit needs.
Transit needs.
[laughing]
Yeah, unmet needs. We'll get a whole cast. Please come by because ironically, we only get three or four people from the whole community that show up, and that is the one meeting each year where we take official comments and considerations for if we're going to change how we provide things here in the community. And so that's very important. In fact, if you show up, you'll be one-fifth probably of everyone who has a comment to be made, so I just want to remind people, 5:30 on the 6th.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second. Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Pro 5-0. Takes us to the treasurer's office, and item number one is the treasurer's report for the period ending September 2008. This time I'll turn it over to our city treasurer, Sean Farrell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, city council members. The highest priority of a city treasurer is to make sure that whatever money that the city has is totally and completely safe. We as a nation, as you know, just experienced the biggest financial crisis in the last three months since 1929. I sat here three months ago, and I told you that our money was safe. I will continue to sit here and tell you, including tonight, that our money is safe. And I'll go through exactly where we have our money invested. First, we have money in the, in with the state of California pool. It's called the Local Agency Investment Fund. And there is legislation, or I should say, there is a law in place that states that these, no matter how bad the budget crisis gets within the state, that they are not able to borrow or take those funds away from municipalities and special districts that make up that pool. We also have local CDs. We have two CDs over at Farmers and Merchants Bank. And the way I make sure that that money is safe is, there is a particular website called the BauerFinancial.com, and that, the Bauer Financial, what they do is they rank banks and their soundness. If you look at the four banks that are here in town, Farmers and Merch... And they rate them like they, someone would rate a movie, from zero stars all the way up to five stars. If you look at Farmers and Merchants Bank, they're, they have the highest rating possible, which is, which is five stars. And I'll go through the other three banks here in town. Wells Fargo is next, they're at, they're at four stars. Stockman's Bank, which is also referred to as Premier West Bank, and you'll actually see the name change come January, they are at three and a half stars. Union Bank is at three stars. So that kind of gives you a gambit of the four banks that are here in town, Farmers and Merchants, of course, being the highest. If you look at their financial statements, you will see why they received a five-star rating. Lastly, we have money in what I call, what I call government agencies, which are callable bonds. Those bonds are issued by the Federal Home Loan Bank, by Fannie Mae, and by Freddie Mac. And you kept up with the news, in the last 90 days, the federal government assured, or I should say, took over Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, and which simply made our, our bonds a little, even a little bit stronger than what they were. And tonight, council members, that's really all I have. I just want to mainly, I just want to emphasize that the taxpayer, your taxpayer money is completely safe. So I ask for your approval of the treasurer's report for September of '08.
Any comments by council? Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Scotty?
Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pro 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Item number two under the regular calendar is under the city manager's office, and that is the C C S D settlement agreement. At this time, I'll turn it over to the city manager's office.
Mr. Mayor, this is a negotiation that took place between the city and the C S D. I tried to become a part of that, but it was like pouring water with oil, and so they eliminated me from that. There were four individuals, two attorneys, two staff members that participated in this. Kurt Campion, Jason Berman from staff, Steve Rudolph, and Lee Rosenthal, who was an appointed lead, who was an appointed attorney. And they spent a lot of time, they learned a lot, there were times they wished they weren't there, but in the end, I think, that's the product that Jason's going to tell you about came out in the best interest of the community, and we want to thank those four individuals for all of the work that they did, and it was a tremendous amount of work. So I'll turn it over to Jason.
Sure. I'll, you know, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I will go through relatively briefly some of the highlights of the agreement and just a little bit of the background for the benefit of the public. Back in July 2007, the city adopted amendment to our redevelopment plan, which added certain territory to the plan, as well as extended our fiscal cap and some other business to that amendment. September 24th of that same year, the C S D filed a lawsuit against the city, or the redevelopment agency, I should say, seeking to invalidate that redevelopment plan amendment. Additionally, over the last year or so, the C S D has challenged the city on a number of other issues, including the general plan, as well as some other private development projects. We have been, as Ted mentioned, over the past year, engaged in discussions and trying to find some common ground and settlement on all of these proposed issues, and we feel that tonight that we have reached a fair compromise on all the related issues, something that will allow us to move forward together, providing benefits and services to this community. The agreement in the staff report tonight resolves all of the pending disputes. It resolves the redevelopment dispute, the general plan dispute, as well as all the individual project disputes, and puts us on new footing to be able to move forward in cooperation with the C S D as a collaborative partner in providing these important services to the community. I will kind of... I will kinda take you through some of the nuts and bolts of the agreement, some of its technical, I'm not gonna get into some of those things, but it is in the, in the report. If, if the public's interested, a copy of the agreement is attached, it's on our website. Um, essentially, what happens with redevelopment is, a portion of the tax increment gets taken from all the different taxing entities in the community and gets, and gets provided to the redevelopment agencies for doing various projects in the community in order to eliminate blight in some of our older areas of, of town. There's a lot of different projects that we have that we will use those funds for. Um, the CSD was concerned, obviously, with their funding being, being, being taken from a portion of that redevelopment area, and so we negotiated an agreement that allows up to seventy percent of those funds to be restored to the CSD, and those funds will specifically, specifically be used for capital, fire, protection equipment and facilities, and emergency medical equipment and facilities to benefit the city of Galt. All the money that will be collected from redevelopment will either go to the redevelopment agency, or will be reallocated, uh, a portion of it to the, uh, the CSD for fire services within our community. So all that money will stay, uh, within our city, which is a great thing. Uh, one of the elements of the agreement also is that the redevelopment agency will pay for some minor improvements, the Fire Station Forty-five, um, up to about a fifty thousand dollar commitment from the redevelopment agency for that. In addition, the city has had a number of fire impact fees, fees that we collect from the new development within the city, uh, for various projects. We've deferred some of those fees with the redevelopment agency paying those back at some point in the future. We've agreed to, to pay those, uh, deferred fire impact fees back to the CSD earlier than we normally anticipated. The amount of that is about four hundred and nine thousand dollars. In order to pay this, uh, these deferred fire impact fees sufficiently, we're recommending a shift from the fire impact fee account over to the, um, Northeast Area Impact Fee Account, where there is sufficient funds in order to be able to pay back that debt. Um, one other important element of the agreement is the establishment of a new fire, uh, community facilities district, meaning that new projects, as they come forward, new residential communities in the city will be assessed, um, anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars per single-family resident on an annual basis to pay for improving, um, fire services within the community. Right now, the fire, there is a fire CFD on new, new developments in the city. It's a little over a hundred dollars per single-family unit, so that would be increased from about a hundred dollars to a hundred and fifty to, to two hundred and ten dollars per year. Uh, essentially, the recommendation is that the council adopt the resolution approving the settlement agreement between the City of Galt Redevelopment Agency, the City of Galt, and the Kasuna Community Services District, loan four hundred and nine thousand dollars from the Northeast Area Impact Fee Account to the Fire Impact Fee Account, and appropriate the same amount from Fund Eleven for the repayment of the deferred fire impact fees. There will be another report, um, and the redevelopment agency will also, because it's, there's three parties to this agreement, there's the city, the redevelopment agency, and the CFD. Uh, that's basically it in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Questions by council?
None, thank you.
No questions.
All right, we do have one speaker sheet, Al Baldwin.
Good evening. On election night, Al Baldwin, a concerned citizen of Galt, and it is a city of character. And by the way, I, I didn't say this in the beginning, but, but Jason, I know you were doing a lot of this on these flags and banners in Galt, they looked terrific, up and down C Street, and hopefully on Lincoln Street, and they're, they're really great. People are wondering, what, what happened, what happened? So they're standing up. Uh, tonight, a question was asked to me, well, not tonight, but it was asked to me, and I couldn't answer it, and so I decided to, uh, ask you guys for a little bit of information and maybe clarity on, for me. Uh, ever since Galt was incorporated, and the, and the Galt area had its own Galt Fire, Area Fire District, and the district boundaries were much larger than the city limits at that time, the city collected and kept all monies collected for the impact fees. The Galt Fire Department would then ask for these monies, but also had to justify how they were being used. My concern with this agreement is, and you may have answered some of it, but, is how are our monies collected in Galt, for Galt, to be used in Galt, going to be accounted for? Uh, it sounds like the CSD board will be deciding on how those funds will be collected in Galt, uh, for Galt, and to be used, instead of our locally elected officials asking this and doling it out. Uh, it seems like we have no control at all anymore on this. Now, I, you know, I, I may sound like a dummy, but I don't understand.
Well, it's essentially a new way of doing it. What we're gonna do is, the CSDs can provide us with an updated nexus study for the impact report, which means they're gonna identify all of the, the needed projects, which fire apparatus, fire trucks, fire equipment, uh, upgrades, improvements to fire stations. The city council will see that list, and they will be able to authorize and approve those lists. So long as the CFD funds things that have been pre-approved by the council on that list, those funds would be remitted to the CSD. They would not be allowed to use those funds for anything that the city council hadn't already approved through that study. So they'll just do, instead of doing it each time they want something, they're coming back to council each time, the council will essentially pre-approve the list, and as long as you're using it for this list of items, then you have our authorization to use it.
There's also the annual reporting that the city would receive as well on the expenditure of.
At the end of the year, they'll have to provide us with a report that will say how they, they use the money during the last fiscal year.
The only thing that's changed, Al, is that they identified the projects upfront, which still control the money, has to be used for the same type of purposes, which is for firefighting, and so that's the only thing that's changed. So they don't wait for it every year, they'll have a list, and as long as there's money and, and those projects meet the list, they can spend it.
Raises included?
Nope, this is only capital items.
No, no staff costs?
It's not, yeah.
And Al, I would add, I sound like one of your concerns was that the, the funds would be used outside the city.
Right.
And that would be something we would be able to.
But they won't be, right?
No, they do, they do it the same way. What they use staff to do is tell us, they would come in and say, we want a fire truck, here's how much is allocated to the city, here's how much outside. All they do is they do that upfront, and we've approved it already, so that we already know the amount that goes to each entity. So, uh, we're not paying for anything in El Grover outside the county, it's for only within the city's use.
So if a fire, if a piece of fire apparatus benefits eighty percent of the city and twenty percent of the county, they could only use our funds for eighty percent of the cost of that apparatus. That's not gonna change.
Hmm. Okay, well, there'll probably be more questions, but that, that helped clarify it a little bit. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the community? All right, do we have a motion?
Move we accept the recommendation, and, uh, I wanna congratulate Jason in particular, but all the staff that was part of it, from our legal side and support side. Um, this was a lot of litigation that we didn't wanna be a part of, and we're glad to have it behind us, and in the settlement, it makes some other potential litigation go away, so, um, this is something, I think, that benefits us a lot.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Pro five zero. This time, we'll adjourn and reconvene to the redevelopment agency. Liz, would you please conduct the roll call?
Board members, Haynes.
Here.
Haynes, here. Claire.
Here.
Roboy.
Here.
Meredith.
Here. Consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Pro five zero. Item number four, under the redevelopment agency, is the executive director's office, C-CFD settlement agreement.
We're gonna turn this one over and have Kurt do it.
This is the same report that you just approved on the, uh, council agenda.
Slightly differ recommendation, which the only addition is the fifty thousand, authorization for the fifty thousand dollar for Fire Station Forty-five improvements.
Comments by council?
I have no comments.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Pro five zero. This time, we'll adjourn and reconvene to the Galt City Council. City clerks report.
Yes, before you tonight, um, Bob Beederman has been serving as our Sacramento Yodo Mosquito and Vector Controlled District Representative. His term expires December thirty-first, two thousand and eight. He did, um, indicate an interest in continuing as the city's representative, so at this time, the city council can reappoint Mr. Beederman, or we can go out and solicit letters of interest.
Don't we just normally, uh, don't we just normally advertise for letters of interest anyway?
Um, except for this committee, yes.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we just open it up for, uh, letters of interest.
I would agree with that.
Okay, we will move forward with that.
Anything else under city clerks' report?
Just a few reminders, I don't think I'm gonna go through everything, just a reminder to the citizens, our offices, city offices will be closed on Tuesday, November eleventh, in honor of Veterans Day, and, um, I'll go through them quickly. The Secog Local Unmet Transit Needs Hearing, five-thirty, in the council chambers on November sixth. November eleventh, Ways of Treatment and Oversight Committee was canceled for that day. Um, November twelfth, um, also canceled the Parks and Rec Commission meeting. On November twelfth, the Park Master Plan Update Ad hoc Committee meeting will be held here in the council chambers. November thirteenth, Planning Commission meeting, six-thirty in the council chambers, which takes us to our next city council meeting on November eighteenth. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Comments by staff?
None.
Comments by council, Vice Mayor Haynes?
I have none.
Just one quick one, uh, the Friends of the Library will be starting their, um, candy sale. They make great Christmas presents, uh, don't have to worry about size or anything, and it helps support our library, so put that on your Christmas list. Thank you.
Councilman Claire. Um, gosh, we're going for a record here, now I feel bad, I have a couple. First, Greg Holliday, I called to wish him Happy Release Day. Release Day is November first, it's the day that we can release the water from our ponds, and we got through another year, and had adequate storage and land application and all the rest. I drove out there that day, and two of the ponds, one just got a touch in it, so congratulations to you and the farmer and your staff for getting us through another year and managing that property. That's, that's the lowest I've seen in a couple of years.
Yeah, I think I mentioned last year, before I came to work in Galt, that was my anniversary. Now it's most discharge day, so.
You take your wife out there? Um, I just wanna congratulate the mayor, and hopefully you're gonna talk about the meeting on the youth plan everybody had.
Sure.
Okay. Then, um, and on that, and maybe you got, I thought I saw something from MetLife on guidelines for that program, did you see a publication from them?
I, I actually saw the National League of Cities has, uh, created a carbon copy blueprint that they're sending out to all of their member cities to adopt, so, that might take care of a lot of the background work that we were talking about doing ourselves.
Yeah. And then the last item, it's not agendized, so we might need to do this, but I wanted to ask council to consider. We get a, a report each month on building permits, and through November of this year, we have eighteen point zero eight, I won't even go into the zero eight part of it, eighteen permits, six of the eighteen are really two businesses. Rite Aid had three building permits, probably for various aspects of their building, and Kids Come First had three. That means for the rest of the city, we've had twelve building permits this year. And I noticed in the break room, there's a, maybe it just closed, a position to replace someone, it's not a new hire, it's a replacement. And I would ask council if you'd like to consider holding off on replacing anyone, especially in that area, but maybe others.
No, but what you gotta realize, though, is the touch-your-head building inspector, Al's gonna leave, this individual's gonna take over, and he accepted a job, so you're down to a junior officer, and that's the only individual that you have.
What position are you referring to?
I think, um, I assume you're referring to the buil-, building permit technician. That did just close on Friday, and that is a support position that is a replacement, and Ted's just adding more information that we've received recently about our senior building inspector, who will be leaving.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
And then Al will be leaving our building official.
Could we bring this to next agenda and discuss the whole department and needs? Um, and let us know, we've got, I think, two permit specialists, as I recall, but just, uh, if council's interested, I just.
I'd be interested in knowing.
I'd just like to look at this before we hire a position, especially bring someone on from another job, if we're not gonna be able to support them, but.
We'd be more than happy to. We've looked at it in great detail, there's memory to the file, we'd be more than happy to make your presentation, so you understand why it's there.
Okay.
And I think when you get through it, then you'll understand.
Okay, thank you.
That's it, all right. With that. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said.
Congratulations to everybody who ran, with the saying about, you know, entering the arena, for all you people, all the different positions that people are out there running for. Um, I know five of us up here at least know what that's like, and it is no easy chore, so congratulations, win or lose, for willing to literally put your hat in the ring, and to our state and nation's leaders, whoever they are about to be, uh, they're, they're all gonna need our help. There's a lot to be done, and, um, God bless them all, and, and I wish them the best.
All right, thank you. Councilman Roboy.
The October police report is on our agenda, it's on our website, if you wanna look at what's going on in the police department, and, um, it's pretty detailed about what's happening in the month of October. That's it, thanks.
All right, I'll, uh, just briefly cover, uh, something that Darrell had previously mentioned. Last Monday, we had a fairly historic meeting with all three governing boards here in the city of Galt, the Galt City Council, the Galt High School District, and the Galt Elementary School District Boards, to meet to discuss a youth master plan for the city of Galt. This is something that was, uh, part of my mayor's administrative plan for strengthening local families. Uh, I think we got very positive direction from both boards, as well as members of the city council. As I just mentioned, the National League of Cities has just created a carbon copy blueprint that they're sending out to all of their member cities, and our CAF committee is going to work with that to try to develop Galt's own youth master plan update. I'd also like to, uh, thank our city clerk, Liz Aguirre, and Jennifer Cannell, for setting up for the Mayor's and Board Chair's Forum that we hosted here in Galt last Thursday. Our Olympic gold medalist and her husband were the guest of honor. Uh, Darrell and myself both attended, it was a great event, and, uh.
It was fantastic, and.
Terrible rainstorm.
And black tie catering.
Wow.
Just great.
Terrible weather, we still got a great turnout, a lot of elected officials from around the region were able to attend. I also wanted to, uh, bring up the fact that I saw the IOOF building was starting to tear apart the roof. Does that mean that they're putting up the, the steel girgers now?
Yeah, I just talked to them yesterday, and they're just finalizing all of their permit application, they should be submitting, he said, in about a week for their permit, for their building permits to start construction. They've finished the demolition work, they've gone in and removed a lot of the dry rot and asbestos and mold and all the other stuff that was in there, and they're gonna actually start construction, so.
Any unforeseen problems? Major?
No, but some of the, some of the truss work had some major dry rot, they've gotta redo all those, but nothing that they, really surprised them.
They're trying to get a roof on so they can work in it, work on it through the winter.
We, we are gonna have to start a fund for the homeless pigeons, I know.
And the last thing, I wanted to, uh, congratulate Don Haynes, our vice mayor, on, well, to